We were always going to put it at the front and I was getting really nervous.
We're gonna go ahead and give the meeting started at 6:00 PM, so we're gonna call the meeting to order for the zoning Board of Appeals here on Monday, February 5th. Darren, do you want to call roll?
Sure.
You got everyone?
I've got it.
Okay, next order on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment? Again, this is separate from the from the public hearing part, but is there any public comment? If not, move on to approval of our minutes. Minutes from our last meeting, which was June 7th, 2023. I'll take a look at them, they're in the packet for the board and there's no objections. I'd ask for a motion.
A second.
Motion in the second from the board to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, those are passed. Okay, we are now moving on to the public hearings. We've got two of them on the agenda tonight. So what we'll do is we will open up the public hearing with motion. We will conduct the public hearing, close it, then there'll be discussion and decisions made by the board. So with that, we'll start with the first one on the agenda tonight is for Al Renkey, 423 Second Street requesting certification of interpretation of in this quote, section 113-41, business district permitted uses. Mr. Renkey is storing rental dumpsters on the property with no retail use present. Legally is driving parcel 251-3106-114-0154. I'd ask for a motion from the board to open the public hearing.
I'll make motion to open the public hearing.
A motion in the second to open the hearing. If you roll call or just a voice? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, the public hearing is open. If you have anyone who wants to speak for or against the proposed variance requested.
Besides me?
I do.
So I'm obviously here tonight.
First, state your name.
My name is Albert Renkey. I own a couple of businesses here in Merrill. I am here tonight to try to get my containers to be allowed to stay on the property that I have down next to the post office. Mr. Pogel told me to move the containers, that they were not a retail business. It is a rebuild business. I don't have any other location to put those containers in the area, so my business does depend on keeping them there. I have no other parking lots that are available to put them in, nothing. So if I have to move those containers, I am literally hurting my business for it.
How long have these containers been on the premise?
They've been there since October of '22. And this is the first time I've had a problem with it.
Mr. Renkey, previously you had cars for sale on that property also, Richard.
Correct.
Yep, and recently you quit selling cars on that property and then just had the dumpsters located there.
Correct. That was when I closed the car dealership down. I opened the dumpster business, container business, and then I started putting containers in there.
For a while you had both there.
Just while we sold out the remainder of the cars.
What is this, what was this lot purchased at? Was this a spot for retail use? Or what is the, what is the term for this, this lot?
Originally, it was a, the sign that was issued was for the car lot and that when Mr. Renkey purchased it, that's what it was initially used for, was for the car lot. And we can get into more discussions on that once we close the hearing on that.
Does it, so in the letter that you submitted, you mentioned that there was some dumpsters stored there, at least on a temporary basis, with trash in them, they were full dumpsters?
So there was an accident. What happened over the holidays was there was a miscommunication between landfill and my driver. My driver had went out and picked up a bunch of the dumpsters and went off to landfill and realized the landfill was closed. So we did put them on that lot, which I guess now hindsight is 2020, I wouldn't have done that again. But we did put them on the lot, they were on the lot for two days till the landfill opened back up and then they were immediately removed.
Any other questions for Mr. Renkey as part of the hearing right now?
Are those dumpsters all washed out all the time or?
Yes, they're, well, they're washed out maybe once a month. It's not regular trash that usually goes in them, it's all the construction debris, things like that. Household furniture, construction debris. A lot of our big contracts that we have, like penal buildings and stuff like that, where the building, big buildings all over.
What was in the containers at the time while you had the complaints?
I believe a lot of furniture and some construction material. There was, I think, two dumpsters there that had, we had complaints on it. Mr. Pogel called me for it. It was just household stuff. I think it was because you could see him, see the stuff in the dumpsters. But again, that wouldn't happen again had I known, you know, it was an issue and if there was a miscommunication with landfill.
Any other question? Thank you. Is there any other, any other members of the public to speak for or against the public hearing? On this one with regards to the property at 423 Second Street? Last call, anyone to speak for or against at this time the property 422 Second Street? If not, I will ask for a motion to close the hearing.
I see.
So move second, motion in the second to close the hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing closed. Any discussion, comments from the board?
Well, I live on, I live on that block. I really, I've talked to a bunch of people outside of the garbage. I don't really, I haven't seen it as an issue and no one else has. I mean, a lot of people don't, you know, care about, you know, whether, what it is on there. It's like it's being used for something. You know, I guess, yeah, I guess I don't know, Darren, why would, I guess, what makes it in city lingo that it's not a retail business? In your mind, or in your interpretation here?
There's nothing in our business code. In our business section of the zoning code for permitted uses. That lists that type of use. If you look in your permitted uses of the business district, the closest thing you have is a carpenter shop, plumbing and heating electrical, printing plant, publishing, that type of thing. But everything bases on retail sale.
Sure.
That's what everything is pushed towards, is retail sale. And if you look, for instance, you look at another place that has rental dumpsters, something that's comparable is Baumgartzenau. And that is zoned industrial where they are. And the complaints came in pretty hot and heavy from people going to the post office. And Mr. Renkey said, and I, I actually went out to the landfill that same day, that Friday, and the county had started being closed on Fridays that day before the holidays. And I'm sure you ran into that too with that. So that was a different situation there, but that's, that's what started it. And then this isn't a variance. This is another power of this board is to deal with interpretations and things that aren't specifically listed.
And then, so yeah, so what, say for instance, like West Side Market has U-Haul on there. That's a rental type thing, but if that was the only thing they were doing and say they were doing it on this property, would it all, would it be an issue here too?
That could be another questionable thing. At one, at one time, the U-Haul was located at 38 Grand Avenue for a time, but there was retail sale going on there also. That was happening at that location. So for instance, if whatever determination you made that this board makes, it's going to be vastly interpreted then. It's going to be widely interpreted. That if that is okay, there's nothing that would stop Eric, for instance, in the future. He's, he's zoned business at his location if he wanted to start doing those types of things. With, and I'm gonna pick on him though, because he, with his dumpster carts that he had there for a while there, he was allowed to have those there. He rents those, but he had retail sale going on there too. And that's why I brought it up with Mr. Renkey having cars there for a portion of the time.
To be able to, so I see that there are 40, 42 that I can see on this list that are considered. Would we be able to amend this list to put on something like a situation like Al's having right now? To add it to the list? Or are we, is, is the variance just going to be for this property?
You could, you could, you could make a motion to amend the business district.
Doing the whole thing?
We could, yeah, we could. The interpretation of the business district for permitted uses to allow rental businesses? In this, in this case, you want to be specific if you do approve it with, you can put conditions on it, though, for instance, that you can't have full dumpsters there. Or if you choose to have any fencing there to protect it from residential, you could do that.
I was gonna question that, it would be a question of the public to have a.
There's, there's also, we had spoken with Mr. Renkey in the past about hard surfacing of the parking lot. With his car dealership, he was required only to park on the portions that were still hard surfaced, that were blacked out there. And so those, those items may be addressed as part of that also.
So another, just bringing it up to us about, so when these dumpsters are rented out, I'm assuming, let's say around the block, they get rented out for, say you're doing a remodel for like two weeks. Now they're on a premise that isn't zoned commercial, but they're doing a remodel on the property. Now they're, they're allowed on that property for these two weeks because that's the business part of their transaction to the. What, what would be the difference if this property that's circled here, they would have the dumpsters on this property being right here due to this business? Now it's not retail because it's not listed as a retail here, but you go down, you go down one household and it's sitting there for two weeks and they're filling it up. Now it's allowed right there, but it's not allowed right there. The separation is?
We have sections in our code on shipping containers and things like that that allow them to have shipping containers, dumpsters, things like that during remodeling and permits and, and all of those things that are tied in.
Yes, and that's where I'm going. I don't see the, the difference between having it this location to having it that location. If he's gonna keep them, if he's gonna keep them clean and they're gonna be in this area, I think it's a viable place for him since the, before Al bought this property, it was.
Gas station for that.
Yeah, but it was, it was pretty, it was pretty, it was pretty tall with weeds and, you know, it was, it wasn't capped up and it's, he's obviously doing a good job of keeping it.
So I just have another, another thought process here. So Al, Al does, he has a car shop, which does a retail type, it's retail type business. He's doing the, he's doing the rentals basically out of that building there. But is it, is it more because the properties are separated that's the issue?
Yeah.
Okay. I gotta, I gotta mull that over in my head for a second here. Someone else hit something.
If the, if the board wouldn't interpret, but would instead ask the code to be updated, who does that? Is that through the city plan then? That would be a city plan. You, you can, you can interpret the, you can interpret the code to say, we believe the rentals and then we would just update it at, at city plan as coming from a recommendation from this board to update it at city plan to allow rentals. A rental business.
Because you know how much of a stickler I am about this stuff, Darren, so, and it's, but I want, I don't want to cause issue with, with a business in town that's, that, that's right. And really outside of the garbage that was there, wasn't really having, you didn't hear any complaints before that. Okay.
Are we going to open up a can of worms or are we? Going ahead and dump first? From Gerson's own apartment or to Marbury West Park?
I, I mean, I, I don't see a problem with it, honestly. It's, it's, you know, obviously up to you guys, but for a business to be, have pay taxes on a lot and to, you know, he had retail, if he wanted to bring a car over there and say put a for sale sign on there, obviously then it would be a retail lot. So if he wanted to do that, I mean, that would be probably the easiest way.
And outside of just becoming a parking lot, most people are not gonna dig into that ground too far.
Right.
So let's just, and that shouldn't be a, a reasoning here per se, but it's a thought.
I mean, if you guys want to make it separate, this lot without opening a can of worms, can we do that?
What's that?
Can we just make the variance for just this lot?
Oh, what you're doing is you're doing an interpret, you're going to deal with just this lot, but you can actually, but under other business on our agenda, you can recommend to the plan commission that the business district be changed.
Well, if, you know, if he's saying that you don't want to open a can of worms on it.
Well, you could.
You could, right.
That's, that's the.
That's the, that's the catch-all. Not many people, not many people are gonna read, read into that and say, okay.
With this agenda item, you're dealing just with this lot. So your motion's going to reflect just this lot. But on other business on your agenda, you can recommend to the plan commission that it be included, that rental businesses be included as a permitted use.
And you said we could ask for a nice in this?
Well, you can put.
I don't want, I just.
On the interpretation, you can put conditions.
Would you be opposed to some kind of fencing like around the front area or anything?
So I'm not opposed to it, but I would believe that the US post office would be opposed to it.
The only, the only place, if you're gonna do anything with fencing, the only place I would think that anything would be appropriate would be on the Heim Street side.
So the post office does use that lot and the customers going to the post office use that lot a lot. I'm not opposed to a fence, I have no problem with that. But we're gonna kind of hinder parking for the post office. I mean, you guys have a lot of customers that use that lot.
And I've had no complaints from the Heim Street people at all because they're all rentals.
I'm just asking, just so I can, just so I know.
One other point I would like to make then is the Heim Street, there are a couple of tenants back there that rent from other people in the area that have gotten my permission to park their cars on my lot back there, so.
So and I, like I said, I've had no complaints from.
Yeah, and I've talked to a lot of them, so.
I guess, I know we talked about not opening a can of worms, but I mean, there's other currently empty lots in town. And are we saying, not just rentals, but any sort of business, you know, they don't have to actually establish a place of business, they just put a sign and a product there?
Well, but he's, he's still operating out of a, out of a building though. Out of a retail building, it's just.
In this specific instance, yes. But I'm saying somebody else, right?
Yeah, that would, yeah.
But that happens all the time and then Darren asked you to shut them down.
Well, this, this is an accessory. An accessory to a primary business that is in town. It's just a different type of business that you are basically approving the use of, the interpretation. And I'm not gonna do it myself, that's why you had.
I don't.
I guess I'm not, so what you're saying, what if you had a, I don't know, what if you had the popcorn trailer there, that's where you went to rent your trailer? Would it be retail then? I guess that's what I'm saying is there's nothing there.
Well, then, then basically what I would go back to, because I have nothing else in the code to deal with, I'd go back to, to a comparison of this car owner shop one where it deals with 40%. Show me that you're doing 40% retail there and then you can have the other 60% being rent. Anything, that's all I have to hang my hat when it comes to the code. And then I, if I don't, then I'd bring it to you.
So he was okay as long as he had the cars there and the dumpsters combination? Didn't make a difference, right?
Correct.
You, you, I talked, I talked too much, is that what it is? See, that's why, I don't talk often and when I do talk, it means I get myself in trouble.
Just an ask to be specific in your.
Yeah, that's what I.
It's gonna be a tough one when you.
I know, right?
I mean, to get it right without having to. I don't see a problem.
As long as they're clean. A problem.
Let's be, talk to all about this. So if I'm, not a motion, we're talking it through here. I make a motion, if I make a motion to approve, we're approving a variance or an approval of?
A use.
Of a use? Okay, so we're, I'd be saying we're making approval of, of a use?
To use a lot for?
For rental?
Rental dumpsters.
And I guess I would like to send the business thing to city plan or.
We'll do that under other, other business, other, under number six. We'll do it under, under other business on the agenda.
You change your sign? You get your sign changed out at least because you're not.
Well, I'm not, I'm not giving up the car sales business, I'm just not doing it right now.
But it's not?
He doesn't have to change it.
If you can't think about changing your sign. Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the use of rental, there's a rental? Trailers?
Dumpster.
Dumpster? Do we have to be specific to this property? Empty, it must be empty, must stay empty. Yeah, and clean. It could be put in empty and clean? And. And, all right.